It's not as bad in Plymouth as in some towns, probably.
I won't be here at the next meeting, likely.
Okay.
I'll see one of the students.
Really just the first tax assessment, so if somebody has on their deed, like, you know, make it two, one, two, and three. You've got three.
Pass him some of those.
And then look at the record, and that's where it's been.
The kid that didn't come in with his home.
And then what happened is that for assessing purposes...
Happens to the best of us.
No, doesn't it?
So it's usually in the simple function of assessing, and a lot of it happened when everybody went to the tax maps and went digital.
I have to have that one.
Kind of where someone arrives from it.
Yeah, that's good. I have everything else.
It's from a, you know, mapping assessment, like, oh, the same person owns these, we'll just make it all one.
All right.
Yeah. That's always tricky. I think our property... Oh, sorry, am I holding things up?
You can get a couple more words out if you want.
I was gonna say, we have a subdivision. We have a parcel that was...
Dig it!
...town road that went over it, and when they did the tax maps, they subdivided what was one parcel. Even though it was, and it was an easement road, it wasn't a right-of-way road. Go for it. Sorry. Thank you for entertaining my discussion.
Okay. Good evening, it is 6:31. Oh, the mic is on. And I hereby call the November 17th, 2022 Planning Board Meeting to order. And I will read the role of members. Rebecca.
I'm here.
Phil.
Here.
Neil.
Present.
Mike.
Here.
Ahern. Mark.
Here.
And Susan.
Here.
And myself, present. And alternate members, Zach. Michael Bouchard.
Present.
And Peter Julia.
Present.
Okay, so we have a full board tonight, so we will not be seating any alternates. So we will begin with the review of minutes of October 20th. Give you a moment to take a look. I personally did not see anything. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of November 17th.
Second.
I mean, of, no, October 20. That's what it is.
Yes. Here we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
abstained.
Abstained.
All right, the minutes of October 20th are approved. Have there been communications received?
I've not received any communications.
Okay. In that case, we will move on to our public hearings and new business. So we have a...
Chairman, I'm gonna refuse myself.
Okay, thank you, Neil.
Yeah, that's what I think you can say.
It's pushing your... It's kind of hard to get out of here.
I think he's fine.
Okay, so first, we have a subdivision application from Stephen Blanchett pertaining to the property at 88 Ledgeseide Lane, PID 212007. The application is to subdivide one parcel of 18 acres into two parcels of 3.1 and 14.9 acres. This property is owned agricultural and ICD, industrial commercial development. And... Do we have anyone here from Mr. Blanchett or anyone representing? Thank you. If you'd like to come up and say a few words about, if you'd like.
Well, sure.
About the application.
Where would you like me?
At the podium.
So I'm Steve Blanchett. I've been a resident of Plymouth now for about, close to nine years. And I have this parcel, a lot of you have the plot plan. And I'm subdividing a small piece off, well, relatively small, 3.1 acres from the 18.1 acre lot. I have to be able to pay the tax bill. That I understand is going up a little bit. And the propane bill and the electric bill, but in all seriousness, it's a piece of land that I down the end of a cul-de-sac, and it's not really even in view of my house, which is my primary residence, which is up above it. And I don't use the land. And I thought I could sell it to create a little bit of revenue, actually for those payments. Be a little bit less painful that way to have a chunk of money set in an account specifically for those expenses. So that's what I'm seeking to do. Willing to take any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do you have any questions or thoughts, comments from the board?
I should add, I guess it has been, as you can see, they're surveyed by, Pioneer Surveying up in the Bath, Lisbon area, and I know they do a lot of business in the area, and they're certified registered surveyors. And I think they did a very good job. And it's been irked and soil-tested also.
So just to say a few words about the process here. So our process is that we first take a look to see if everything is in order and is complete, and then we'll accept it as complete if it is. And then, following that, we will take a closer look and see if we are able to approve it.
Just to confirm where all the butter notices went out. It's been a while since I've been through a subdivision. We haven't seen many of them.
Seems pretty straightforward to me.
Okay. So does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll move with it, we accept the application as complete.
Second.
Here's a wave of motion and a second to accept the application as complete. Any further discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so the application is accepted as complete. So at this point, then, we, you know, continue to ask questions or look into this to see if we are able to approve the application. At some point, also open it up to a public hearing.
Are there notes for the view easement on the plan? Are they in the deed? Do you happen to know? The plan notes that there's a demarcation of a view easement.
Yeah, it's hyphenated on the plan, but it's not described on the survey that you have in front of you.
Is the language in the deed?
I believe so, but I am not certain of that. I've got to believe it would be. But I don't know how it reads off the top of my head.
If you look at note number two, Phil, on the plan, the bigger, if you, you've got the big plan in front of you there, note number two on the left side.
Yep.
Mentions a book and page number for...
Protective covenants for Ledgewood.
I believe it deals with the restriction on cutting brush or trees, but I'm not sure how it reads.
Yeah, volume 2130, page 204, Second Amendment Declaration of Protective Covenants for Ledgewood. Looks pretty straightforward to me, you know, the, it's already received state subdivision approval. The 4,000 square foot area is outside of the well radius. The well radius isn't crossing any property boundaries.
Adequate frontage.
Yeah, and acreage.
And acreage.
Kind of an interesting little, this, the fact that this ICD is right there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Well, look at the parcels next to it. Most of those are in the ICD.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's interesting.
Are there any further questions from members of the board?
I still think it's pretty straightforward.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would move that this is not a development or regional impact.
No.
You're going through everything there.
Seriously. You're doing your fact finding, findings of fact?
We're actually required by RISI to note that.
Oh, the fact, oh.
Findings of fact. We've been through a bunch already of this.
Forgot about that.
Yeah. And we could be overly thorough about those and be here all night. So in that case, it is currently 6:41, and I open a public hearing to discuss this application. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak?
Sure, that'll be good.
Hi, I'm Neil McIver. So I'm a licensed subsurface designer and certified wetland scientist. And I, I walked this lot, and I found no wetlands on the lot. I did a soil perk test. The soil is a spota soil, it's a fine sandy loam. Had a four-minute perk, which is quite rapid. And there were some subangular stones, but there were no boulders on the lot. It has about a 5% to 8% slope. I, in my opinion, it's an excellent lot for residential development.
All right, thank you. Any further comments? Okay. So it's 6:43, and I will close the public hearing. Are there any further comments from the board?
Would you like me to go through some of that staff report note?
Sure, if you'd like, yeah.
A little bit of background, which is in the report that everyone has. The Ledgewood subdivision subdivided in 1992. This originally was two lots, lots eight and 10 on that plan merged in 2001 into what's now this parcel, 18 acres, at the same time as the house was built. You know, it's mostly in the ag zone, as you mentioned, it is partially in the ICD zone, as is the rest of the northern end of the Ledgewood subdivision. You know, just a factor of where the zoning lines were drawn. Minimum lot size here is one acre. The lots being proposed are 3.1 and 14.9 acres. The minimum road frontage, 150 feet. Road frontage being provided is 150.28 and 326.23 feet. It has received subdivision approval from NHGES for the creation of the new lot. And we do recommend that if, in the event of an approval, that, you know, as, as this typical MLAR copy be provided, along with Grafton County Registry of Deeds recording fees.
Thank you, Joseph. Any further discussion or comments? Would you like to...
I don't want to be the only one here. I want to take all the fun.
We could just wait.
I mean, I can make a motion that we approve this application. Second.
Are you recommending conditions with the approval?
Just that the applicant or surveyor should provide a MLAR copy of the plan for recording, along with the recording fees.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second for conditional approval with the MLAR and recording fees. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. This subdivision is approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I do have some checks with me, and I'm supposed to go, but you do what this time, Joseph.
We'll be in touch. I'll send you a written notice of decision, and at that time...
Yeah, as we compared.
Not a problem. Not a problem. I'll be in touch with you about that shortly.
Thanks again. All right. Oh, was that Neil again?
I'm so sorry.
Okay.
So up next on the agenda is a request from Jeff Hiltz for the town of Plymouth to take over Chedarn Lane, Point of View Drive, and Ski Lift Road. And... So just to clarify the process here for staff, so the actual session of the road to the town is a select board issue, and our goal here is to kind of clean up some loose ends with an old approval that hasn't quite gotten all the loose ends tied up.
To start that process...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The developer, Jeff Hiltz, had requested to come to the planning board to have an initial conversation about it, but we'll get into discussion of the steps, but I believe you also have a copy of the road acceptance policy for the town that was sent out.
So, Jeff, would you like to say a few words?
Sure.
If you can come up to the microphone, that'd be great.
Just to provide a little bit of background on this project, on October 12th, there was a walk-through conducted with June, Joseph, the road agent, Mike Vicnally, Scott Whedon, and myself. Mike Vicnally, for your information, is the town engineer. And there were, there were three items that were pointed out that were not built per plan, and I just wanted to offer some background on that, and then I had a few questions. One of which, on phase one, it called for a roundabout, and that area was turned into a green area with a curve put in, as opposed to the roundabout that was shown. And that request was made of one of the residents on the subdivision, and I asked them to come in tonight so they could talk about that and explain to you how that occurred. This is Julie and Christian Besson. If they're okay to see?
That's okay, yes, thank you.
Then the other two items I'll describe, but they're the ones that requested that change, and I'll let Julie describe.
Can we go to Mike?
Yes, please.
I think it was 2006. It was a long time ago. And I know Jeff was out there, and we live right by the roundabout, right across the neighbor's driveway. And so I said, what's the plan for this area? And they said to pave it. And I, and I said, well, can we turn it into a green space? Because we don't need the roundabout anymore, they're extending the road. So it was for a fire truck turnaround. And then, once the other road was punched through, we didn't have to have a dead-end turnaround. So instead of paving it, I said, I'll grass it, I'll, will you lay some dirt? You lay the dirt, I grassed it, I said I'd mow it, and weed whack or whatever. So that's what we did. So actually, then, we set up a meeting, and the town planner, whoever was the town planner around that era, the 2006, I don't know who it was, she came out, she was small...
Marion, Marion Bader.
Okay. Lovely, she was very nice. And she thought it was a great idea to do a green space. And, and all the kids in the, and so, so it was Jeff, Mary, and myself, and I think there was one other person, but we can't remember. It was a long time ago. But they agreed to it. And so I guess nothing was ever written down about this. I'm not sure why. But the town planner thought it was a good idea, and so we went ahead with it and grassed it, basically. And, and I've taken care of it ever since. We've brought in a few more dump trucks of dirt, grass, it's been a bike park over the year, it's been everything, and the kids in the neighborhood use it. It's been great, actually. I'm really glad it's not pavement. So that's why it's not what it shows on the plan. So I'm very grateful that they let us turn it into a grassy, green space. So that's the story.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a question? Do you, do you still technically own the road?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. That's why I'm before the board and the slug board to get it turned over to the town.
Yeah, yeah. I was just trying to think about the process, like, it seems like there could have been a boundary line adjustment, once that was abandoned to...
But no, we're not adjusting any boundary circle.
I'm not, I'm, I'm, no, I know. I don't want to make things more complicated. Please proceed.
And then, the other two things that were pointed out by June through the walk-through, do you folks have a copy of the letter?
From Kaden Partners?
No, from June?
Yes.
Okay. I assumed that, but I... There was another change regarding the Cistern, and I've got some documentation that, at the time of the walk-through, I did not have. And I would like to present that to the board if I could. I only have the one copy, so if you want to walk in and pass it around. But this, this is a copy that was, was initially sent to Chief Tebow, who was the fire chief at the time, and he crossed out his name and put my project manager's name on it and sent it back to us. And this is a sketch showing the new location of the Cistern and his signed approval. So that folks can pass out it on if they like. So that folks can pass out it on, if you'd like.
We can probably proceed. We can take a look at this while you proceed, if you'd like.
Okay, I've just got several other things. There was also one other thing that June pointed out. At the top of the mountain, at the dead-end road, it calls for a cul-de-sac. And there was a request also made by the fire chief to turn that into a hammerhead turnaround. And the only thing I can find on that is some correspondence between my project engineer and Mike Croto, who was the SEA consultant, again, acting as the town engineer at the time. And I can provide you with that. Also included with this is an invoice of my engineer, who did the design work, who wrote the changes. Why there isn't a plan in my records and in the town records, I really can't say. If this... Not to confuse the issue, but if I'm going to continue to talk, I don't want to screw up this process. But I'd like to point out one other thing, if I could.
Okay, yes.
During the walk-through, I had pointed out to June that there's a vernal pool on the property. And that, in order to get the wetlands permit, we put a conservation easement in place. I misspoke on that, and I wanted to clarify that, June. And what actually exists, there's language within the wetlands permit that prohibits that area to be built in. And I didn't want to have that misrepresented, so I wanted to point that out.
So it's not a conservation easement?
I'm sorry?
It's not a conservation easement?
No, it didn't have to be, because they put it in the wetland permit.
All right, I don't think that keeps anything from getting... I mean, we can...
No, I'm just trying to clarify the point that I misspoke to June.
Not an easement, got it.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear any of that.
It's okay.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
I have a copy of that permit, if you'd like to see it.
I don't need to see it. We might need to go in the file, but I don't need to see it myself.
Yeah, we can... We may want to make a copy of some of these items after the meeting, but not... Does it need to be read?
Well, the only reason I bring that up is I misspoke, and I wanted to clarify that.
So what about the... Sorry, may I ask a question? What about the retaining wall on Point of View Drive that is encroaching into the road area?
I went to a SLUC meeting on Monday night, because I was referred to them. And they told me that they're going to refer that back to KV Partners and the town road agent. And I spoke to Mike Vicnally today, and he told me he would be back to me in two or three days with some sort of decision.
So if I'm understanding this correctly, there's... These are the records that are missing, or we're missing some plan that... Or we need the plan? I guess I'm confused about what...
Well, that's one of the reasons I'm here as well.
Is it... You got June?
Any clarifications?
It's got a long history.
Yeah.
And I know, I guess, we spoke first to Jeff, who is the owner of part of these roads. And then, I believe that up top one, Point of View and Ski Lift, it's Summit at Mount Frontenac LLC, which he's one of the partners of. So he's here representing to himself for the lower part and the upper part by the summit group. So he formally... He had met with Joseph and myself, and we'd had a couple of conversations about what to do to have these roads, given the level of development up there, have the town take them over as town roads. So we pulled out the road acceptance policy and provided that to Jeff. And, I don't know, a few weeks went by, and he submitted a formal letter to the select board, so that you have that road acceptance policy. So basically, he's kind of going through step by step on that. So he also provided funds, which we have in an escrow agreement, for Mike Vicnally from KV Partners to do some engineering review. So that's why we had the site walk with Mike. And Mike prepared the memo that you have in your packet with a number of issues. And I actually drove up there this afternoon, too. And so a lot of these things, and again, I'm not an engineer, so we rely on Mike to certify that these things got done. There's guard rail that's been installed. I definitely want to make sure that we've got drainages cleaned out, that kind of thing. But we can work that out with Mike, because he'll go back out and do another inspection. There's no road signs yet, you know, that kind of stuff. But it's really Mike will be the one to go through this couple pages of all these bulleted items and tell the town that, yes, they're adequate or not. In doing that, he relies on a set of plans that, you know, was approved by the planning board. And that's where our records are, you know, a little bit uncertain. We've spent, I don't know how many hours, digging through a box of stuff that, literally, it was like a deck of cards, in terms of completely shuffled and unclear about a variety of things. A lot of notes and things. But there is no formal record that we can really find that... And through the site walk, you know, we learned that, yes, the neighbors wanted this change. And the cistern at the junction of Ski Lift and Chadron Lane, on the plans, it shows that, like, on the other side of the corner, and instead, it's over by the mailbox. It's in a completely different location. We knew about this wetlands concern. You know, Jeff mentioned the conservation easement. We, since then, I've got a copy of the wetlands permit. I can talk to that in a minute. The change at the top of Point of View Drive was originally, on the plan, shown to be a cul-de-sac. And instead, it was built as a hammerhead. We did have some note in the file saying that, yeah, people looked at it. But the issue is, even the memos and things that he passed around tonight, what seems to have happened is that then consulting engineer was SEA consultants. Interestingly, Mike Vicnally actually worked for SEA at the very end. I think he was up there as SEA at one point, but anyway, that doesn't really matter. They were the consulting. They had different engineers out there. So we had inspection during the process. There's lots of records of their memos of, I went out and watched the construction, and this and that happened, and they still need to do this, this, and this. You know, again, I haven't read every single one, but... So the town had sort of somebody watching it. When there were these changes, whether it was the neighbors requesting it, or Jeff requesting it, or the fire chief requesting it, who knows? The issue is, the planning board is the one with the jurisdiction to make changes, not the fire chief, not the neighbors. I mean, it's just by law, it's a subdivision plan. That's what the plans show. So what... When we walked out there, we're looking at the plans, we're trying to figure out, like, well, you know... And I'm sure the former fire chief said this was fine, but this board, there's absolutely no record that we can find. And Jeff doesn't have anything of coming in with a plan, an engineered plan, that says, hey, this is how we want to change it, from kind of that roundabout to just making a curve. I mean, I'm not saying that these things don't make sense, but we don't have it properly documented. So when the town is going to be... Has this request to take over ownership of the road, you know, from one side to the other, we want to make sure we understand what's been built. So the recommendation is that an as-built plan for the entire network up there should be submitted. And then, it comes to this board, and it's very clear in our subdivision regulations, which go back to November 2002. So they were the regulations... That's our current subdivision regulations. They haven't changed. And it says that, you know, and there's a part that says modifications and, you know, designs and improvements. Basically, if it's... If there's things that need to be changed, it needs to come through a public hearing and document that, okay? So what we are... What I've been trying to suggest is that while these things may be fine, that the record needs to be cleaned up, and we need to have a new plan that shows what was... What's there. Come to this board, have a public hearing with the notice fees, you know, and have a public... It's kind of like a... It's almost like bringing an application in of, here's what we've got. It's not necessarily changing property boundaries. It's not... It's more about the engineering side and the documentation of what the roadway is. And that should happen before the town accepts ownership of that network of roads up there. In addition, there is believed to be encroachment of somebody built a retaining wall on. And my suggestion was that, you know, my recommendation is the town should not accept a road with an encroachment on it. Why would we do that? And in addition, I think there's also landscaping at the top, where that cul-de-sac, you know, I went up there today, and somebody's put out stakes to protect their landscaping, which clearly looks like it's in that, right, that cul-de-sac area. So, I mean, it looks nice, but there should be definite, you know, recommendation that... Not just, you know, that the owner understands that it's not their land, because it's going to be... If it becomes Jeff's land, or the Summit at Mount Frontenac LLC currently, but if the town takes it over, they've got, you know, we need... If someday we needed that space for snow storage, or if the plow turns around there and hits over... Knocks over some, you know, landscaping, you know...
We're going to have a property dispute, and...
Yeah, exactly. There needs to be some clarity about that. And same thing with the wall, because it does impact some of the storm drainage there. So how that gets solved is really for the owner of the road to work with those property owners on those encroachments. In addition, there's... When the original plan for the cul-de-sac at the top, there was supposed to be some kind of a drainage in the middle of the circle. And then, there was a drain that came out, and there was a drainage easement onto a neighbor's property. So that could be extinguished. So since writing these memos and the site walk, we've had a lot of phone calls and correspondence and looking at stuff, you know, for this. Jeff's attorney has been in touch and did provide the wetlands permit, which very clearly mentions that there is supposed to be a deed restriction in that. And I have, you know, I actually was kind of quickly trying to figure out if I can find the deed on the registry. I'm not quite sure I have the right lot. And it's not for me to spend my time doing that. It's for the applicant to, you know, show that they've met those conditions that DES set there, sent there. So... But he doesn't own those lots anymore, so that could be another piece that... And there's supposed to be a fence to protect the wetland area put up, and it's pretty clear in the wetlands permit language. So you don't have that, because we just got that, I think, since the mailing went out.
I believe the fence, June, if I could, just a minute. I believe the fence you're referring to was during the construction phase, but I could be wrong about that. Typically, an orange fence is put up to delineate that area during construction.
So it says a... You know, there's supposed to be... The permit is contingent upon the execution of a deed restriction of 100 feet around the perimeter of the vernal pool. The conservation deed restriction should be incorporated in the warranty deed of the subdivisions for lots four and five. Preservation areas shall be run with the land. Both existing and future property owners shall be subject to the easement. The plan noting the conservation deed restriction on the copy of the final warranty deed should be recorded at the Registry of Deeds. Fence posts and a sign shall be replaced every 75 feet along the perimeter of the natural buffer prior to construction. And 100-foot split rail fence shall be installable along the southeastern side of the pond, adjacent to the roadway, with a minimum eight-inch clearance to allow for turtle passage. So I think it was... Those are more permanent things to have.
The split rail fence would be, yes.
So, you know, we've just been trying to figure out kind of what needs to get done and what the next steps are for... In terms of... Through the road acceptance policy, the planning staff, you know, has a responsibility to make comment... Review the file and make comments, and that's what we did. And we also participated in the site walk, which was really informative. Luckily, it was a really pretty nice day, too.
And so some of the things you see on here, like the cracks in the pavement, aren't really a planning board thing, because they're not about... They're about conditions rather than...
Yeah.
No, and all of those items have been addressed. Even the final pavement has been installed at this point.
Installed a lot of guard rail in there, where it never had been for 20 years, was supposed to be. So it's kind of saying, this is what the plan says. There's supposed to be guard rail along there, so finally, now we have the guard rail. And the final... Wearing course of the pavement was never put down. So just the base would... I guess it held up... Mike Vicnally thought it had held up really well. So, you know, that's good. So he's repaved or put the final wearing course on the... Through most of that area up there. So it looks good, you know, but it... Just because it looks nice with new, fresh pavement, doesn't mean... Mike Vicnally needs to make sure that all the kind of engineering parts are working properly. And you guys, I believe, based on what is in the 2002 subdivision regulations, need to formally approve, for the record, these changes. And we should have an as-built, because their records are just... That's also a piece of it. You know, you're supposed to bring in an as-built plan at some point to the board. So, you know, technically, there's supposed to be a three-year period for building out these types of things. Here we are, 20 years later. So that's, you know, whatever. Can't turn the clock back. But I do think it's really important, if the town becomes the owner of this road, that we know what's there and what was built, and that it's all in good condition.
Thank you. Mike?
So even though there's not a hearing, a public hearing on this matter, I hope we get a chance to hear from anybody in the public that wants to speak on this.
It sounds like there is going to be a public hearing. Not tonight, but...
Well, if there ever does get to that point.
Yeah.
My thoughts, and I appreciate the support staff giving us the information for now, for the planning board to look at this, for the board members. But I find it a little odd that we would bring an application from 2007 to the 2022 for an application for subdivision. Because theoretically, this could have been done in 2015, let's say, and brought to the planning board. And we have a whole new set of regulations from... That probably didn't even exist. It could be, if it were a different subdivision. So working with different regulations, how do you... Do you go back and say, okay, we're going to use the regulations from another year?
We're still on the same subdivision regulations?
If there weren't. If there were something different. I don't want to set a precedent that, oh, we're going to use the subdivision regulations from 1980s today. How do we accept it, if it's not falling within what our regulations are?
I would say, in this case, the applicant is asking the town to take on a certain responsibility. And it's beneficial for the applicant to provide all the detailed information and improvements that need to be made before the town takes on that responsibility.
Right, which is the select board's responsibility. I kind of feel that it's great that the planning staff can aid and help him, so that he's prepared to go to the select board, which is the proper avenue to get what... To find out whether it will be accepted or not. And if not, what else the select board would like to see in consultation with the town engineer?
And it's our role to have the finalized documents and as-built, so when something happens again in 20 years, we actually know exactly what's there.
And I don't... I just don't see a hearing and an application process. There is no more subdivision going on. It's already done. And I realize, you know, I'm sure there needs to be an as-built, what's actually there, and then the select board will make their decision. But it's not...
By definition, we have to approve the as-built. If there are changes to the subdivision plan, we have to approve them.
Under what regulations? Under the current regulations?
The as-built is not what's on the ground. I mean, that is...
In this road...
And that's where, by state law, the planning board has the authority to approve and disapprove subdivisions, not the fire chief, not the select board, not the town planner. So that's where we facilitate the process, but it needs to come to this board. And that's pretty clear in our subdivision... See, item four, you know, modification...
I don't see a problem reviewing the as-built, you know, but the requirement can't come from us. We're not the enforcement mechanism here. The enforcement has to come from the selectmen. And if they put a condition on the acceptance of this road of having an as-built that meets the current conditions, then... And the applicant brings it to us, we are... We have to hold a hearing and consider it.
I'm not sure that it's required that we have to have a hearing. I think the select board said, which I was there that night, to bring it here and update the planning board on what's going on. I'm not sure that it just needs more of an administrative okay, rather than a full application process, notification of a butters. Winter's coming. Snow's going to need to be... Need to be plowed. And I'm sure the residents aren't excited about getting it tied up with the planning board, when all it just needs is maybe just a signature by the chairman after... After the supporting staff have gone over and made sure all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. But to bring it back to a full hearing, it's already done. Everybody knows where the lots are. It's administrative changes, if any.
Could I point out a couple of things to...
Rebecca's also been...
Can I just... Sorry.
I'd like to make a point that we're 40 minutes into this meeting, and we've already approved one hearing tonight. And we've been in yours for a good 10 minutes already. So, like, we could have a 30-minute hearing if he brought us an application with everything we need, from a time perspective. Like, we have the... we need from a time perspective. Like, we have the ability to have very expedient hearings. Sorry.
Rebecca?
Does this need to go to full application process, or is it just we need to approve the plans?
The ASBILs.
ASBIL plans or the, the changes to the plan, not even, I mean, the ASBIL, built are what gets filed. Does this need to go through the whole abutter process? Or, I'm asked, this is, I'm not necessarily, I'm not agree necessarily agreeing.
No, but I, that's a great, that's the question that I'm asking.
Question clarification.
So the subdivision regulations discuss modifications of designs and improvements. So when you've got changes to a curve, changes to the location of a cistern, changes to the, you know, hammerhead cul-de-sac area are the main ones, that, that that needs to come to the planning board. And it states, you know, to modify the location or design of any of the required improvements or installations, the board, after a public hearing, per section 4G, with notice to abutters and the public may authorize such modifications, which shall set forth in writing and be signed by the chair. So that's what I'm saying. It needs to have a plan that shows what's there. And it need, I'm just going by what the regulations say. It's very clear. It needs a public hearing and notification to the abutters. So that's, that's what we're, that's what we informed him that he needs to do. And that just because the fire chief said something, you know.
And this could be a pretty.
This board has that jurisdiction.
This could be a pretty streamlined process once everything is put together, which has to be put together anyway.
Right. I don't think anyone, sorry.
Would you like to speak?
Just, just a couple of points. During the design process review, typically, it's been my understanding that it goes out to the different department heads for their review and approval as well. So I'm a little confused as to, if, if that's the case, then the fire chief, at some point, with that signed approval that I passed around, gave the approval to move that cistern. So that amended that, that plan.
No, that, that can only happen before this board approves the plan. That design review happens before, like, in, in the process of a hearing, the initial, a, a change to that plan.
Well, I, I understand your point.
The fire chief does not have the authority to alter a plan that's approved by the planning board.
I don't mean this against anybody on the board, but typically, the board members don't have the expertise to approve the plan. They only do that on the recommendation of the engineer and/or their department heads.
True, but it still has to come back for review and, and approval of changes.
And, and/or just amended plan with an ASBIL.
I, personally, I don't see any problem with any of these changes.
Oh, no, I don't. There, there isn't. That, that's why I was trying to offer this information so you can see the background behind it. And just a couple of quick questions, if I might. In, in looking at, at your application, I don't see where the application fits this particular situation because it is a subdivision and we're not subdividing. So is there a different application that I fill out?
My suggestion is that you submit the ASBIL plans with a letter saying, here they are, you know, you know, as of this date, we're submitting them, I don't know, a, a letter. And then it would need to come forward, the documentation of where that all is, and the appropriate fees that we now currently charge, which are on the applicant. We have an applicant, a fee schedule for noticing abutters.
I'm sure you're aware, the recorded plan doesn't show any of the roads at all. It just shows the right-of-ways and the lot lines. I have copies of the plans if you'd like to see them.
And the registry only allows you to record the page with the lot lines. But a subdivision includes a whole lot more. We want, you know, street standards, you know, storm drainage, all that kind of stuff.
I understand. I'm not trying to get out of anything. I just want to try and get this right.
Part of the, part of the plan set of what gets approved.
Now, June, if I could just show you this, this, this is an ASBIL drawing that was just concluded today for the hammerhead. That's the right-of-way, that's the hammerhead as it's actually built. Is this what you're looking for in the form of an ASBIL?
I think, I, I don't want to answer that question without looking at it in more detail here.
Well, I can leave it with you and you can get back to me, but.
We can try. Yep.
Can you try it?
Well, we will try to get back. Yes, Jeff, we will get back to you. You've been very responsive on this.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not trying to push you. I'm just.
We may need a little time.
I'm just trying to point out what you're looking for, so I can provide it. So.
Okay. Give us a chance to look it over. And then, you know, again, with a cistern, we will probably want more information about where it's located and the size of it, that kind of thing.
Keep on that.
On a plan right here.
Yeah, we can.
Okay.
John, I've got a suggestion.
Yes, ma'am.
Why doesn't this board just give approval for the support staff to make sure everything's on there that's necessary, and then give you the approval to sign it when it's done, so that it can go to the select board and get this town road approved that should have probably been approved a long time ago? And the, some of these residents of that subdivision have been waiting years. And they were here about four years ago in front of the select board and asking for this. And I think it's, I shouldn't say the word silly, to go through an application process and to notify abutters when it just, it's a, it's an administrative item, not a subdivision, that we then have to potentially hold them to different standards. And I appreciate, but it's up for the board now.
I mean, I, I would say, on, on, on the one hand, I appreciate your frustration. And, and I also understand what the words are in our regulations, which seem to suggest what June is saying. And ultimately, that decision, of course, is not mine to make if other members of the board want to go with that. And that's not really, a motion could be made.
I make a motion that we allow for the support staff and planners to make sure all the information's on the plan that they believe that would satisfy for the select board to either approve or not approve, and give up, give the go-ahead for the chairman of the planning board to sign off on whatever needs to be signed. That's a motion.
Add a motion. Great. So we have a motion and a second for the planning staff to take care of this matter with a ultimate signature from the chair of the planning board. Is there any further discussion?
I think the board should have some opportunity for discussion.
Not just right now, but in, in the, in the final process of approval.
The motion should be discussed before we vote on it.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Yeah, I, I agree.
I have a, I have discussion, I have a question for the select board rep. Neil, do you think there's enough information for the select board to be able to make a decision to go to either accept or not? If the planning board goes through the motion and accepts it?
If, if the planning staff is satisfied with Jeff's good faith efforts to clarify all the required details so that the road can be accepted, I would say yes.
I would say, I'm not certain that's the question we want to be asking to the extent, in the sense that it's not about whether the planning board has enough information or not. It's about what our process is at the planning board, and whether we believe, and to what extent we believe. There's a certain extent to which certain decisions, smaller decisions are sometimes made by staff. But to what extent we want to relinquish that to the staff, rather than follow the, the letter of our regulations, which does put it to the planning board to actually ultimately have that say.
So, John, I would agree with that. If we're in a application and it's brought forward, and then all of a sudden, they make changes to the plan before anything's sold, before anything's built out, and they make some changes to the plans, that's one thing. Nothing's been approved yet. Nothing's been built. No one's living in their homes. But in this case, it's extraordinary. I've never seen anything like this in 10, 14 years on the planning board. I'm sure Neil probably hasn't. But it, it just seems extraordinary to bring it through the application process, whether streamlined or not, for the application, the abutters to be notified, fees to be paid, and go through that process, when it can, it's, it's an administrative detail, as far as I'm concerned. And that's what the motion is about, is making sure we have everything done that we need.
I guess that's, I mean, one of the big questions. Are these just administrative details, or are these larger changes that need approval of the board in terms of changing where roads go and other such things?
So we're also, we're into mid-November now. Let's say we get to a meeting in December, then the, has to go to the select board. We could be January, or could be December, January, before this gets approved. And these folks have had issues in the past with plowing, and they just would like to try and make this happen as quick as possible. I'm trying to come up with an avenue that would do that.
Rebecca?
So is that the issue? Are we trying to do this before more snow flies? Or is this, I, I'm just, I'm wondering what the, this subdivision's been here for a long time. Why is it all of a sudden, now it's a rush, right now?
It's not all of a sudden. We've wanted this for a very long time.
And but, and I, and I understand and I respect that. And, you know, not, we're certainly not trying to make things difficult, but we have regulations on the books that it's our jobs to make sure that we're following the regulations that have been established by this planning board. In 2002, we've got our site plan.
Have you ever heard of it happening while the houses are already built out?
I actually don't think that matters right now. I think what we've got is what's in front of us. We don't see a lot of big subdivisions here. Right now, we've got a paperwork issue that, that things never got wrapped up the way they were supposed to.
Most of the roads in the town.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not done.
Sorry. Go ahead.
So I would like to, I'm just wondering if this is an immediate issue that we have to deal with right now. If we were to say, okay, we're, this is going to go to, follow our regulations, and this is going to go to a public hearing, which would happen, we could notice, if you get noticed right away, and we could do it in our December meeting, and then it's to the select board in January, you know, we're, we're looking at a slight delay from now, but really, you know, I, I understand, just trying to understand, does this, is the need immediate enough that we have to fast forward through our regulations?
John? I'm not comfortable with encumbering our planning staff with the responsibility of negotiating and making decisions on behalf of this board. It puts them in a very difficult place of negotiating with the applicant when their role should be, should not be that way. My, my thinking is I'd rather, you know, we, as I said before, we're not in an enforcement role here. If the select board makes clear that there are issues that need to be documented and changed, I think all we can do is accept an application and, or accept the documents in, in whatever form is appropriate. If they are substantial changes that need to be, go through the public hearing process, then we'll hold a public hearing, but.
And it's not our goal to slow things down.
No, I agree. I, I'm very supportive of the town accepting the road. I, you know, but I also feel strongly that when the road is accepted, the documentation of the road should be accurate in terms of protecting future interests. And, you know, you know, I have a few questions about, you know, things like when the, when the hammerhead was changed. I was, I was curious if thought was given to adequate turning radius for fire trucks and emergency vehicles. But, you know, if, if they're not proposing to change the boundary lines and that the easement is still in the form of a cul-de-sac, then vehicles can turn off of the paved area as long as residents are told that they can't landscape up to the edge of the pavement. You know, that may be one of those things. I, I, I'm talking about the top. I'm not talking about your, your parcel. You know, I think where your, your lot, it makes a lot of sense what was done there. And my, the, the question I asked before was, it would seem to make sense to me just to do a quick boundary line adjustment, bring the road into the correct right-of-way and just drop the, bring the, the lot line extensions all the way to the edge of the road.
Well, let's look at the procedural question for now, probably.
What do you then do with that small, unusable piece of property which is not a lot?
Well, you could do a boundary line adjustment with the two parcels that are there, where, you know, if, if they're, you, you could make them slightly larger by bringing them to the edge of the road. That's fine. I'm, I'm just saying, you know, it's a, it's a, I'm not suggesting or suggesting that anyone require that. I'm suggesting if you chose to do that, you could. You still own the property there. You're abutters. If you came to a mutual agreement to adjust the boundary line of the road.
And Phil? Let's not get too lost in the details.
No, I know. That's fine. My, my point about the cul-de-sac was that, at the top, I think it's in the interest of the town to document the original plan and show the, the current pavement, but retain the right-of-way that's there.
That's the intent. We're not, we're not changing the right-of-ways.
Susan, did you have a?
I do. I just want some clarification. It seems to me that Mr. Hiltz has come to get some clarification on what he needs to provide for documents. Is that correct?
To, to some degree, yes.
So it seems like we don't have the paperwork, which is the ASBILs, which is telling us what's in the ground, what's there, the boundaries and everything. And as soon as we get those, we can, at that point, look at those ASBILs and determine whether or not things need to be changed, whether or not he's in compliance, whether or not we're going to accept it or deny it. Is this an accurate assumption?
Yes. And the question right now is whether we have the authority to accept or deny it, or whether we're giving that over to planning staff and putting that burden on them.
Well, so.
That's on the table. Yeah.
I, I don't, I, I just think that according to the regulations, it's not the planning staff, even with that authorization. I don't think it should be put on their burden to do that because that's our job. And we have to go by the regulations. But I just, I just feel like he's looking for some clarification at all. And I think we have to go just baby steps into this. We have to go put the process. And that's just kind of jumping ahead.
Do you have another comment, June?
Yeah. So when this came on for the agenda for tonight, it was my understanding, it was Jeff was going to talk about, you know, this process and kind of introduce it. And then at the next meeting, we would have the public hearing and that kind of thing, provided he has the ASBILs done by then, following that process. So I thank you for saying that. You know, I think that that's, that's what we went, the subdivision regulations went through there. I mean, there's lots of other aspects in here about performance guarantees that lapse that we don't have, you know, that haven't been maintained for the 20 years that should have been.
You're incorrect with that statement.
I have no documentation provided, Jeff, that has, you've never provided anything that shows that to us. So we, we, I called the bank and they said that the letter of credit was gone.
There's a bond in place that, and Abria has a copy of.
I have not seen that. So that's news to me. Nobody's shown that to me. But that, I'm not here to argue about it.
I'm not either. I'm just trying to.
I'm here to try to go through this. I also want to point out in the subdivision regulations that the board makes these decisions, and there, there's a reason why you need to maintain that authority because it's also about appeal process. Your, your discussions and decisions are made in the public. We have minutes of documentation of what you discuss and what happens. And then that becomes the record if there's any appeal that would go to Superior Court per state law. If Joseph and I are downstairs doing something and handling it through a phone call or a conversation, saying, oh, yeah, it looks fine, where's the record of that? So I, there's an awful lot that's, needs to be finished up and kind of cleaned up here. And I think that that responsibility, in all respects, should stay with the, the planning board. And legally, that's the right thing to do, to help make this, that's what we're trying to do, make this properly finished.
Yes.
And so having us do that is not.
It shouldn't be that complicated, too.
Yeah.
Are there any further brief comments about this before we?
Well, I just had a question about what I'd like to see when we do see the, the, well, I guess there's a vote on the table.
Let, let's, let's like get that through first. Are there any further comments, like brief comments, before we put this to a vote?
I, I'd just like to say that I'd, I'd like to see the planning board be expeditious, that Mr. Hiltz has been cooperative. He's, he's, he's acted in good faith. And I, I think that it's clear what the issues are. And I would like to, I, I would like to think that the chairman of the board could review the paperwork that's submitted and, and decide whether or not to approve it.
I think the public process is good for everyone involved. And I think we can be expeditious. There's, there's going to be a process anyway to, to make some of these changes and just bring it to the planning board. And anyway, so we have a motion and a second on the table for this not to go to a public hearing, but to go through planning staff and be signed off by the chair of the planning board. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed?
Nay.
Abstentions? I didn't actually vote aye for the opposed. Sorry.
Say nay.
You're a nay.
Yeah.
Or a nay, yeah, yeah, nay, yeah, sorry. I got wrapped up in the vote and forgot to vote myself.
Is there anything that's unclear in terms of what's been identified by Mike Bignalli or, or planning staff in terms of, you have questions about what you'd like to see from, or what we would like to see, I guess?
I just have one more question based on everything we've talked about tonight. On, on the notices to the abutters, since there are three as-built that are gonna be required because of the modifications, do those notices go to the abutters that affect those as-built or to the entire subdivision?
Good question.
The abutters get notice based on the application, correct?
It's in the original application.
Yeah, they don't get all the materials, I don't think. They just get a notice of an application.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, but were you talking about the original application?
Here?
No. The only abutters just received notice of an application has been filed. They don't receive all the data. Is that what you're asking? They get all the data?
No.
No, I think the question is, is it the abutters of the changes to the plan or of the entire original plan?
That's correct. That's the question.
I would...
Do we need as-built of the entire plan, of the entire place?
About three roads.
So then...
Well, I mean, but...
But the modifications are only in three spots, though.
Right. I would think that it would be sufficient to only notify the abutters of the parcels where the modifications have occurred, just in the interest of saving the applicant's time. I mean, there are a significant number of property owners there at this point. And I think it would be burdensome to notify everyone in the development.
That was the original application?
Because if you're, if you're traveling around the corner to get to your spot further down the road, you don't want to just notify that corner, you know. I mean, that seems odd to me, but...
And if we're sticking with the application, I mean, this is still...
There's gonna be a lot of abutters, because now there's a whole lot of lots, and they've all been sold.
This is still, like, an extension of that original application.
Yeah.
Which, and it seems like we should stick to the guidelines of that original application.
I don't know. I have no idea.
Yeah, I mean, I would imagine there are dozens of property owners. I don't know how many lots are there now, but, you know, just doing that...
Forty-something.
Yeah, I'm gonna say that if, that's a substantial number of abutters, and not all, I mean, driving by the cistern, I'm not sure that's worthy of notice, but, you know, people who live across the street from it, who might have bought a parcel with the understanding that the cistern was going to be here, but is now here, like, they have a direct interest in that, but the neighbors who live over there really don't, in my opinion.
The cistern was in before any of the houses were built?
True, but people may have purchased them if they, if they looked at the plan, if they looked at the subdivision plan or their deed referenced a cistern, you know, they, they may be under one belief that may change as a result of these as-built. And I don't think it's necessary to notify everyone, you know, all 40 residents of the subdivision, but...
I just feel like...
It's kind of consensus of the board here, because this is a, this is a planning board regulation. This is a subdivision regulation, which is our rules, not zone management.
Yes. Did you have a thought, Rebecca?
Well, I just, yeah, I feel like it's hard for us to determine. I would rather overnotice than undernotice, just as a general rule. But this is a tricky thing.
And I mean, technically not overnoticing, because we'd be waiving to undernotice.
It's a, yeah, it becomes an administrative and fee burden is the issue that's at my concern.
Yeah, yes.
And I think it's highly unlikely that someone who lives on a parcel that's not directly abutting any of these three is going to be able to make a case that they weren't noticed and thereby, like, the approval should be rescinded. You know, I think it's in the interest of everyone there that we're trying to work with the developer to help him facilitate the road acceptance policy. I find it hard to believe that anybody...
So you're saying just to notice the ones where the changes have, were made?
My thinking is that if there's a change affecting one parcel, or, or, you know, if it was two parcels, any, any parcels that abut those changes should be notified. That's my thought.
Cistern is a public safety...
It is.
...matter that affects not only the residents on these three roads, but everybody in that community. So I think, I think the board would be unwise to make such a waiver or determination, when in the interest of public safety.
I also wonder about sort of the legal process and thinking about bigger picture stuff we were, June had mentioned earlier, that are legal requirements, if we're gonna get ourselves into trouble by not doing a full notice.
Mm-hmm.
And I think it's worth noting that we're really not trying to make things difficult here, but really just trying to make sure, you know, and I don't think any of us, I don't want to speak for everyone on the table, but I might for a second. I think that, you know, all these changes, it's not like we're like, nope, cistern needs to go where it was on the original plan. Like, we're, you know, we're, we're here to, to make this process happen, but doing it in a way that, that follows the letter of our regulations, so...
I'm comfortable with that.
So where do we go from here? May I bring up something else?
Yes.
The wet, this wetlands permit and the deed restriction. To me, that's the, I'd like to see that loose end tied up to make sure that that is indeed a permanent deed restriction on that, that vernal pool, because the intention of that is permanent protection. And if that's not documented, then that, that puts that pretty highly valued habitat and natural resource at risk.
Yes.
Not just, not just protected with a split rail fence, but a deed restriction.
Would you be able to provide copies of the deeds that were issued to the property owners to document if those?
I can have Brian Reagan contact you.
Thank you.
Here?
June, will Mike return to the three roads to be able to issue a either compliant or non-compliant second letter to several bullets that he's mentioned?
That would be my understanding, certainly. I would, that's my, again, that part of the process is really, he's working for the Select Board at this point, but that certainly would be the recommendation if somebody, you know, and that's good practice. I think he's already gone out there a couple other times when he's been in. I know in another situation with a road request, he's been multiple times to, you know, see, you know, yes, the guardrail was put in, you know.
Right, well, as Mr. Hiltz has testified, there's several of these items have been addressed, so I'm just curious.
Get him checked last.
And Mike, yeah, Mike needs to...
Exactly.
Yes, they have been, yeah.
Thank you.
Will you remind me, who authorized the change from the cul-de-sac to the Hammerhead at the top? Was that the road agent or the fire chief?
It was the fire chief who had suggested it, and I passed around some correspondence to the town engineer. His name was Mike Quoto from SEA.
Okay. I, I saw it went by, and I just, I couldn't remember who had authorized it. Thank you.
And in that, in that correspondence, it describes the size of the Hammerhead was to be 24 by 80, which it is.
Okay. So from those who have spoken on the board, hearing, I think we're leaning towards a full notification of abutters. And is that correct?
I think if we were gonna do it by the book on the first step, then we should do it by the book on the second step, which is to notify everyone that's there if we were going to...
The only reason I asked that question was, was the clarification to make sure we did it correctly, that's all.
Okay.
Trying to confuse the issue.
I think that's what the thing is. He's just looking for clarification on what he's gonna get.
Yeah, so I think we're okay on that then, and we understand how this process is gonna go forward.
All the abutters.
And, yeah, is there any further?
I think it will better protect your interest as well as the town's.
Yeah.
Can I ask one question? Is there public sewer up there? Is that...
Yes, the entire project is sewer.
It's, it's...
Are we, are we, can I?
What do you have on the towns and tourists?
Yeah, sure.
So we have to balance both, right, because we are acting as kind of the, I understand that the residents, the residents and...
If we're gonna make... If we're gonna make public comments, I would, I mean, first of all, address the board first, and second of all, come up to the microphone.
My name is Christian Besson. I'm a resident of Chadwin Lane for 18 years. And what I've been hearing from multiple boards is the interest of the town, the interest of maybe other people, but never really the interest of the resident. And what I know is that what we're concerned every winter is are we gonna have good plowing? Now, every winter, we don't know what's gonna happen. We don't know if the town's gonna take care of it or somebody else. Mr. Hiltz has been taking care of the plowing of that street for years, and I don't know how he does it. Sometimes it's subcontracted, some of the subcontractor is good, sometimes it's not. Sometimes it's open, you know, early in the morning, sometimes it's not. But I know that vehicles, like emergency vehicles, cannot access us sometimes. Did you know there was an accident on Chadwin Lane yesterday morning that were apart? So when I left after the first snow, a big giant truck tried to go up the hill, and again, lost control and slid back into the Perkins lot. Almost took out, you know, that power box that we have there.
Transformer.
Yeah. So you're concerned about, you know, that vehicle can turn around the Hammerhead or the roundabout. We're concerned about can he go up the hill? You know, Chadwin Lane is a high-step road, and we always have issues with that. So that's our interest. All I know about constancy for the last 18 years on Chadwin Lane is that every year, winter comes, and I pay my taxes. That's all I know. Thank you.
Thank you. So should we, is that, oh, oh, June, yes.
I was just gonna answer Susan's question about sewer.
Oh, right. Is it, is it hooked into Plymouth Village?
So there is public sewer, not water up there, but there is public sewer. So that was another issue that came about from the walk-through and afterwards, that I had a my memo. I had talked to Water and Sewer since writing that memo, but, so the people that have bought lots and built houses up there do pay a fee to tie into, really, it's to connect as much, I guess, I, I don't want to, I'm reluctant to say this because I don't know I have the right terminology, but it's basically to use, you know, send their wastewater to the wastewater treatment plant, but the pipes to convey it from their house down to probably Parker Street are privately owned by the developers up there. Okay, so it's not Plymouth Village Water and Sewer line under the roadway there, which was something I raised as a concern, because I think that's another piece that the Select Board needs to think about, and we don't, you know, I would want to see on an as-built where the manhole covers are and that, you know, that, where those lines are, so we know that. That's part of what was built. And then there's probably another process for the developer to work out with Water and Sewer District on ownership rights and access. I mean, if there's a problem with the sewer line that's now 20 years old up there, who's responsible for fixing it? It's not Water and Sewer, is my understanding so far. So that's another piece that, and then if it's the developer and the town were to take over the road and needs to dig into the road, how is that gonna work?
My understanding is that even if...
Just easements, there's no easement delineated for where the sewer lines are.
Anyone with the sewer line, if you have to repair your own connection, it's up to the property owner to file for a street opening permit if you need to do that. And I would presume that the same process would have to happen regardless of, I mean, I think that Plymouth Village Water and Sewer owns the main in the street, but I think, I believe the homeowner...
No, they do not. It's a private, that's what I'm saying. It's a private sewer line up...
Not there, other places. In other places, Plymouth Village Water and Sewer owns the lines and the streets, but you're responsible for your connection to it.
To the right-of-way.
Yes. So if you're, if it's on the far side of your road and you have to repair your own line, you, you still have to file for, as a property owner, you still have to get a street opening permit to repair that if it, if you have to cross the road. So, I mean, I would think it would be no different here.
And what I'm saying is if the main line in the road...
Yep.
Where's the easement to allow that?
Yeah, that's a good question, but...
So at this point, I was just gonna say, I think we understand the process going forward.
Right.
And, and I, I hope you understand the process going forward, right? And you can work with staff to kind of, to work your way through that. And I do believe we will do our diligence to move this forward as quickly as possible. It's not our intent to tie anything up. And, yeah, thank you very much for coming and helping explain and showing the documentation. And, yeah, just keep in touch with June and the staff and...
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda, other business from members of the board and planning staff. A, zoning amendments. We're back. Discussion about setbacks and accessory structures. I believe, June, you would, like...
I'm gonna turn this over to him.
...get into this, and Joseph can help explain this. So basically, we had talked about changing our setbacks, our residential setbacks, and lowering them to 15 feet. And the question, I guess, was raised, well, what about accessory structures? Do they fall into that same category? And there are towns that have different setbacks for secondary and accessory structures. And I was thinking about this a bit, and I think staff was as well, and there are moments when it would seem to make sense and moments when it would seem not to make sense to have the same for everything. And Joseph, if you have some comments and insight on this?
Yeah, I think you've summarized it very well. We had several meetings where we discussed a couple of different zoning amendments, seven of them, and, you know, sort of the board, we got some pretty good clarity from the board on variance criteria, accessory family dwelling, you know, setbacks in the village commercial zone, height on Main Street, the chickens in single-family residential, and then the floodplain updates. But this, this was one area where, as you mentioned, and June mentioned, there's, you know, we had discussed and the board had sort of supported moving to a 15-foot front setback in those single and multifamily residential zones, where it's currently 30. The question was brought up, and we wanted to turn it over to the board, really, for guidance and clarity on what the board wants to see out of this amendment that we're putting forward. You know, how do you envision that working as far as primary structure versus accessory structure? Do you envision the, you know, both primary and accessory structures being subject to a 15-foot front setback in those zones? Or only primary structures? I think the example that, that June mentioned was, you know, a detached garage. So I guess, yeah, that's, you know, sort of a, to put a bow on the last sort of clarification that we were hoping to get as we get pretty close here to when we'd be working to finalize maybe some text, warrant text, that kind of thing with the board, and start noticing public hearings for these in the, in the coming months. We just want to make sure we get some, some guidance from the board about, you know, that specific point of this amendment that we've discussed.
So we're talking about where we, in the single-family residential, the 15-foot setback that we agreed on, whether or not to allow accessory structures in that, to be within...
Also 15.
Also 15.
Or do we want, like, a garage to be set further back? And I was thinking about this personally, and I said, there are some places where I do want that garage to go further back, and there are other places where it really makes sense to have it, like, right next to. And I was kind of going back and forth on this personally.
But you could have a house with a garage in front of it.
You could potentially have a 30-foot or 45-foot house setback and a 15-foot garage. And this is where, like, it doesn't make as much sense. And how complicated do you want to write this? I mean, we could put, like, 18 different, like, subprovisions on, like...
Yeah, or a shed in somebody's front yard or something like that.
Right, I think...
I think it kind of changes the neighbor's...
I think it kind of changes the neighborhood feel that we were, I think we were trying to go for.
I thought accessory dwelling, or accessory structures under a certain size were exempt from setbacks.
So, you can get a special exception to put an accessory structure within the setback?
Within the setback.
Which is, but, yeah, they are subjective setbacks.
So, without, if you don't think that through, so somebody that currently has a house that's thirty or more feet back, you're basically saying you can put a shed or a garage...
In front.
...in front of it? Is that, that's what we kind of realized the way it was being structured, is that really what you want to do?
I mean, I don't think so.
Well, although we may not like that, the individual may have a plan and they like it, you know, that might be theirs.
People make a lot of bad design choices.
Well, and that's their, that's their, that's their decision, it's not a bad design in their eyes, you know?
The whole point of what we were trying to do was to make the neighborhoods where there's less than a sixty-foot, sixty-foot, thirty-foot setback, make them more compliant.
Make it so the existing homes are not non-conforming.
Yeah.
And even new homes who happen to be built there, if they don't fall in the rebuild within a year category or whatever it is, if there's new development, there's not gonna be a whole lot of new development in those areas, but...
It was just something we hadn't thought through, you know, so I just...
Yeah, I think I would rather see fifteen foot by special exception than thirty foot across the board myself. I mean, because of what we were trying to go for with this fifteen-foot setback, but, I don't know.
You mean fifteen for any structure?
Yeah, the fifteen setback in the single-family, I mean, with, it really was to produce some sort of neighborhood...
If we make a special exception, do we want to leave that discretion loosely up to the zoning board? Or do we want a set of clearly defined expectations, which could just be the character of the neighborhood or something, and kind of, kind of not make it overly complicated? But when you start to, like, actually say, well, it has to be behind the house or this and another, it starts to get really complicated. And I can imagine, like, eighteen, twenty-five different, like, criteria for defining what that is, unless we just say something more vague, like the character of the neighborhood.
Is fifteen-foot limited to new construction?
Well, the proposed change was to, the current setback is, front setback in those two zones is thirty feet minimum. You know, we have many houses, obviously, that are less than that, which is sort of what brought out, brought out that zoning amendment. But, yeah, I think that's the discussion of, you know, new construction being in line with, you know, other houses on the street.
Or tear down, rebuild, or whatever.
And giving people the flexibility also, as was mentioned, like, in places where there is a steeply sloping property to, like, build closer, and is that really gonna be a hardship for anyone around them? And I think as a board, we said, no, not really, and...
Special exception on the zoning board, we have findings of fact, and we have criteria that we have to meet, and one of them is, does it meet the character of the community? So, you know, we have the ability to take that application or each application based on its specific merits in its specific location, and so, that's a factor.
Would you like to see that as a special exception rather than an across-the-board?
Yeah, I would think so.
Okay.
Just my personal opinion.
I have a question. If you have a, an approved lot that's substandard and you want to rebuild or build on it, are you gonna have to go to the zoning board and get a variance?
Not a variance. For what we're talking about, it would be a special exception, which is a much lower bar than a variance.
So, the planning board can do that? Or are you gonna go to the zoning board?
Zoning board would do that. Which would still be easier than it is right now, because now you wouldn't need a variance.
But if we were to make, I mean, the proposed change to reduce the front setback from thirty to fifteen would, by default, allow that development at a lower standard, but if we change it to special exception, even a special exception is generally easier to obtain than a variance.
Lately, we're handing them out like candy.
Special exceptions?
I don't say that, I don't know.
Variances or special exceptions?
Special exception.
Okay. Well, I mean, special exceptions...
They haven't been difficult, so...
Right, well, I mean, it's...
Disclaimer.
Right. They should, as long as they meet the criteria, you should be giving those out like candy. That's what they're for. The variances are the ones that are supposed to be harder, right?
I was the only negative vote both times, so...
Sorry.
You're not that generous with the candy.
Don't go trick-or-treating there.
No one can.
I certainly wouldn't want to second-guess anyone's...
You know, I could see this go either way. A special exception doesn't seem like a terrible hardship to go through...
No.
...to do this, and it might solve some of the concerns.
So, when you say this, you're meaning all structures or...
Or, we could only do accessory structures.
I think all structures. I think it's...
Keep it at thirty and then fifteen by special exception.
I think it's, are we making, yeah, we made it just accessory structures by special exception, I think it's just making it way too complicated to, to interpret.
I'm okay with it.
A thirty-foot front setback...
With fifteen by special exception.
And you can go up to fifteen by special exception.
I support that as well.
Okay.
Having let it marinate for a few weeks, I think that's probably a better solution.
Or they could file a variance, go to nothing.
Yeah.
True, but, but they're harder criteria to meet.
Yeah, I'm not kidding.
It's more like a potato.
Any objections to the special exception?
Sure. Is it doghouse, except?
That would be, so...
We just wanted that clarification as we were emphasizing that and getting to the public hearing.
Under the hundred twenty square feet, right?
I think we were saying no special exception because it just, like, removes another burden for the applicant.
That's what I, that's my map.
On the other hand, I see some of the concerns, and a special exception is not a huge hurdle. Let's keep you busier. I still have enough meetings.
I had one last one. I think that's a better way to go as a planner, you know, I would recommend that that's, it's just easier to administer, I think it's a more user-friendly way to do it, it's a better approach that if somebody, if all the houses along, you know, if it's an infill, like over on High Street, that vacant lot with the house that got torn down, you know, they could go there, and the character of the neighborhood would allow them to build closer to it, and that was the goal.
Yeah.
But it doesn't give it a blanket kind of approach on every other single-family up at Thurlow Street and that kind of area. So, it kind of takes care of that problem that we talked about before, so...
I would like to allow primary structures to go to a fifteen-foot setback, and accessory structures have to file for a special exception to go to fifteen feet, but that makes it way too complicated, and I'd rather just do a special exception for everything.
I'm by me.
So, thirty-foot setback, fifteen feet by special exception?
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
All right. We'll draft it, and maybe we can go over our final, you know, some potential warrant language and all that at the next meeting, since we'll be needing to notice the public hearings in mid-December. So, we have some, some language, and we'll, we'll talk about that with the board soon, I'm sure.
All right, next is six B, the HOP grant update. So, I'll say a few words, and then if you guys want to jump in. So, at this point, we have had two meetings, and our committee is forming at this point. It's still an ongoing process, and we have had members of the public getting involved in our second meeting. Our first meeting was June and Joseph, myself, Sue and Mike, and we've had several members of the public as well joining on for the rest, our second meeting. And we also discussed a couple of other possible members for this committee, so we'll be treating that as an ongoing process. The point we're at in this process, besides forming the committee, is looking for a consultant, which is the first thing we have to do to even, like, kick off the first phase of this housing study. And so, the first core group of us that I mentioned narrowed the list down to four individuals or firms, and June and Joseph made preliminary contact with them, and in our second meeting, we decided that, yes, we do want to meet those four consultants and talk to them, ask them questions, have interviews, and perhaps have a second round, or probably have a second round to finalize our decision. And at this point, we're having weekly meetings on Tuesday mornings, and we're moving as quickly as we can to get the process going and move forward.
Is it funded?
Yes, we received a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Federal money, gone through the state and, yeah, and New Hampshire.
Thank you. Thank you for your work.
And are there any other comments from staff or...
No, I think you about covered it. It's been off to a good start, I would say. You know, we're, we're excited to get it going. We got our, you know, the select board had to have a public hearing to accept the unanticipated funds. They had that public hearing, they accepted the funds. You know, we've, as a result of that, we have the grant agreement executed now and sent on to the state. So, as you said, we're on to start, start the committee's work and select a consultant and get the, get the ball rolling, as it were.
Is this matching funds or just a hundred and thirty-four grand just fell in your lap?
Yeah, a hundred percent funded by the state as part of the Invest-N-H...
It wasn't an application.
Yes, it was a, yeah, it was an, it was a competitive application process.
Rebecca, I, June and Joseph, you guys are working the application.
Yep, and it's part of the Invest-N-H Planning and Zoning Grant Program as part of the hundred million dollar Invest-N-H program. That's how we're supposed to identify it. It's ARPA funds that came through the state in the form of a hundred million dollars for a wide variety of housing related...
Oh, yeah, I remember you talking about that, sure, sure.
Which we've turned into, turned into, like, the support for studying and developing housing in New Hampshire, and we are on the regulatory side of that, like, doing a housing study and...
Can we just play follow-the-leader? Didn't the governor just get, like, six million or four million to do the same thing? Just take his program, scratch it off, write Plymouth on it? How's that? Yeah, plagiarism, why not? Is that what we're pretty easily talking about, right? Some consultant's gonna come in and investigate the town?
Yeah, it's a three-phase, three-phase program, as per the standards. You could apply for one or all three phases. We applied for all three phases. First one is a housing analysis, housing study. The second phase, which sort of really is tied completely to that, is sort of a regulatory analysis of comparing, you know, what is their need for based on the demographics, what we have, you know, and also public engagement, you know, what does the community think, what does the community like? How do you compare that with what we have on the books? Are there gaps, are there areas where they conflict? And then the third phase is regulatory development, where a consultant could potentially suggest changes to address any areas where there are conflicts between...
Ideally, very active public engagement. We're not just, like, waiting for people to come to a planning board meeting or a roundtable or something, but doing something a little bit more, kind of proactive to, to talk to people and find out. It takes a lot of legwork.
So, ultimately, either the master plan or subdivision or zoning, any, all the above could be revised as a result of this?
Yeah, they could be suggested by the consultant.
Scientific data for...
And certainly, the next master planning process will probably benefit tremendously from having this place.
And of course, any regulatory changes, whether, if it's zoning, we need to go to town meeting, if it's to subdivision site plan, we need to go to this board, but, you know, so, it would all be recommendations, of course, but hopefully based on, you know, good data, good public input, and really, you know, anything that would be suggested would be well thought out.
All right. More comments about the HOP grants?
There's a lot of enthusiasm.
There is.
It seems like, it's pretty energized right now.
All right. Are there public comments?
I'm sort of public, I just don't want to walk over there.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Thought you had a motion to adjourn already.
Yeah.
That's from these guys. But, no, I mean...
Get the timer out.
I applaud Mike for championing, you know, the residents, that's great. But, you know, and I understand that citizens concerned because they've lived there, but, you know, back to the bad Santa sort of analogy, no candy, it's buyer beware. They bought a lot on a road that's not approved. It's a subdivision that's been lingering for twenty years. You know, I'm not gonna go to a car lot and buy a twenty-year-old car and expect it to be new. So, it's not the town's burden to accept a twenty-year-old road if it doesn't meet standards, period. That's why we have an engineer, that's why we have a solicitor, that's why we have planning staff. So, as a town resident that lives on a road that is absolutely trash, that road is like a superhighway compared to my road. But my point is, we still need to act, we, board members, in the best interest of public safety and welfare, using the regulations we have and our trusted professionals, such as Mike Vignali from KB Partners. This, this letter he wrote, if everybody's read it thoroughly, there's some serious things on here. And I just, I'd like to say as a member of the public, I hope the board would not take this lightly. Because, because if someone hits that retaining wall, sues the town...
Or drives off, and it's in the right-of-way.
That's bad, right? Now, the guardrails going in, that's good, but why weren't they in twenty years ago? When they built, finished the road? You know, I mean, there's a lot of whys. So, I mean, just, you know, yes, we all pay high taxes here in Plymouth, and they're going up like everybody, like, every other cost of goods and services. And yes, those residents should be protected, and they are protected because the board had an approved plan, and we had good faith that the developer and the contractor was gonna build per plan. Sure, there was downtime in economics or whatever, and it took, you know, forty subdivision, forty lot subdivision up in these parts, that takes a long time to build out. But, you know, and that was phased, is my understanding. So, you know, I, I just think it's, it's unfortunate that it waited to the very end, but just because it waited to the end, you know, what's that saying, right? Poor planning on your part doesn't constitute an emergency on my part, you know what I mean? We've all heard that. So, that's kind of, you know, where we're at. So, I just, you know, I'm, I will probably, if I'm on the board that night, I'll probably recuse myself, because I, I don't think I can look at that impartially, just because of my profession. And I, you know, because I, I take the code of ethics that I signed very seriously, and I, I would never in good conscience want to have any part of anything that I think is either unsafe or a threat to public. And I'm not saying that this is, I'm saying it, it could be, but right now, it's a, it's a tough, it's a tough one. So, anyway, thank you for the time and listening.
If I can share one thought on that, I, I agree with you, if you don't mind. My, my only concern is that, like, I, I also, I'll be quick. I also, I also have a hard time with, with towns that refuse to accept private roads that are built to any, any, every town standard. So, you know, there, there are some towns that just don't want their tax bill going up because they're gonna have to plow these roads that were built in private subdivisions, where the people who live there are paying the same tax rate as the people who are getting their, as the roads plowed and sanded by the town. So, like, my feeling is, I think, as long as the road meets the standard, we should be accepting those roads as public roads. That's all. I'm done.
You can keep going.
See? Thank you.
What's that?
I'd like to say that I'm, I'm really concerned about public safety on that road. And I, I feel that Mr. Hiltz is, you know, he's, you know, he's, he's had a lot of, a lot of obstacles to get over with the economy and, you know, trying to get it built out and just trying, trying to maintain it. And I, I think part of it, you know, has to do with the way the town managed the planning process over the years. It, you know, the, you know, the fire chief was allowed to make changes. And, you know, I think now we're getting on a much better track, and I, I just really hope that this thing can be expedited.
I think every time we get into one of these projects, sorry, heroin, is, it's a good lesson learned for us moving forward, why we do need to make sure we have all those details from everywhere, from the bond to the timing of everything. There's a reason for it, and it's so we don't put our, our colleagues of the future into this type of situation.
I feel like we flipped in public comments. Any comments from the board? Any comments from the board? Well, thank you all for your comments. Well, well noted. And now...
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I was gonna refuse myself, so you can see Peter and have him make the motion. Nope, not tonight.
Meeting is adjourned.
It's in the minutes, it's last time.